I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, my father, we just thank you for this day, we thank you for this town, we thank you for each and every person that is representing their niche of this woods, and we thank you Father God that that we have a peaceable and tactful meeting today, Father, and give you glory for what's accomplished here today for our little town, in Jesus' name and amen.
Amen.
So let it be.
I haven't looked over, so y'all can still hear.
I didn't take my pieces of the pack, take the minutes, I just took.
It was a mix up, I didn't get my package, that's why I'm not saying anything, because I hadn't looked over my package yet, so I don't know if I proved more enough.
Motion's good for it.
A second.
Roll call.
David Sein.
Yes.
Mr. Knight.
Uh, approved the financial report, we're gonna hold up on that because nobody got the report, it's six o'clock, and we're gonna have to have a meeting, we're not gonna do that tonight. Because it was late, should've come in earlier, she never got her package at all.
It wasn't late?
Yeah, it was late, yeah.
They weren't late?
Yeah. It should've been.
I got mine yesterday.
What?
Not the financial reports, those were on the desk this afternoon, I had a class on Tuesday, and I've had visitors in the office doing audit work and other things, so I didn't finish up with them until today, so that's why nobody got the financial report until today. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with John, I just now got it, so I didn't.
We got mine after lunch.
Well, I got mine on the walk through this place. We don't have to, we just leave that.
Can't we just have a meeting in a day or two, if we want?
Or we can leave it carried till next month, you know, I think everything's in order.
Yes, sir, the month is balanced and closed out, and all the reports ran, it's finished out today.
Everything is correct and in order.
Yes, sir.
But I don't see you reading it tomorrow, keep it carried till next month.
We won nine months with another one, yeah.
Well, we just carried over, yeah, we just carried over.
Carry it over next month.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Right, yeah, bills we paid. I got, I got, I've got some issues, but.
Yeah, so, uh. Uh, Beth, do you have the breakdown on the bill with the city attorney?
I do.
You touch on that part?
I can, I'll go over it with what information I can give out.
Would it be too much to ask that anytime there's a bill like that, that we can just get?
I wasn't given a redacted copy of it, and I couldn't pass out copies of this copy.
Well, would you ask him that you want to do that for the book of names?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, um, he has five point seven five hours from June the first through June the tenth for working on the sewer project.
What sewer project?
The land that we purchased upon the highway, um, and that included close.
Okay, was that, that legit?
I don't know, I wouldn't know, do you know about that? He didn't tell me, but he did, when we done, he closed on it, so.
Well, yeah, closing on property, you're talking about sewer project.
That's the property closing on the property purchase, yes, and it included coordinating with the registered deeds and other people, including the tax successor, drafting the closing documents, meeting with the people, having the documents signed, so, I mean, there's a long list on here.
Yeah, that's, that's, how many, how much?
Five point seven five hours.
First date.
Well, I mean, we could've got a, we could've hired another attorney for five hundred bucks, I'd do anything for closing.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that, that's a little steep.
Okay, from June the twentieth to the twenty-fifth, there are five point five hours where he coordinated, provided records, interviewed, and had other interactions with the comptroller's investigator.
Got a what, uh?
Investigate me?
No, sir, that's not necessarily the case.
What, they don't wanna know what you do?
I can't talk about that, but there's several claims that have been filed with comptroller's office, but I'm, I'm under strict confidentiality rules.
Where's been?
But I, but I thought, but I thought if, if.
Let the board make as plays?
Would be, um, in other words, if he had a complaint, or is he standing as the attorney?
She interviewed him as the acting city attorney.
And, and we're charged for that?
I, I wanted us to present the bill, that would be a question for him. I didn't, I didn't prepare the bill.
I think, I think he needs to be here to answer it.
I mean, I think if I'm being, I'm investigated, or if I'm just answering questions about an investigation, that's not like you're working for the city.
There was some, the involvement where the city was involved is there was some city records that he provided and things like that.
Okay.
He came into City Hall that day, it was actually the day Ms. Brandon fell, and she was here, and when he walked in the door, she asked me who he was, and I told her, and she went up to him and told him she would like to speak to him right then, he said, I have a family emergency, and she said, it's not gonna take too much of your time. She didn't really give him a choice whether he was gonna make the turn on, um, so, and the rest of that time, I'm just going by what's on here, I don't, I don't have personal knowledge of what time he's been on this stuff, um, but just providing records and researching things and providing the things that she asked for, which is a very extensive list of documents that we're having to provide to the state. Um, the other hours on here, there was, I guess, the situation last month where we were gonna have a budget meeting, and there was a question on whether or not it could be open and closed. The State Open Records Council contacted him about that, he discussed that and kind of researched that with her, and made the decision that it needed to take place, that was one point. Two, five hours, and then there was a situation, and it's a confidential situation with the election commission, where Ms. Michelle contacted me and asked me who the city attorney was, and she contacted him about something to do with someone who has run for an office.
All of those, we sat there and talked about that, and he, on two separate cases, was asked what he had going on with the market, and he told W.C. and myself, point blank, the only thing that he foresaw was finishing the property on sale up there on the highway.
Well, it sounds like you were.
And we, we, we discussed with multiple bands, not just with, with multiple bands, that anything else that had to be done, had to be cleared through you. Had to be cleared through you, and I understand he's talked to the investigator, that, that, that is between him and the investigator, but if, if we're not notified about what's going on, I don't see the city being responsible for paying those, those things.
Yeah.
I came with a clear contract.
But Frankie, didn't, didn't a couple months ago, y'all said to halt everything with him?
That's what I'm saying, not just once, but multiple times.
Exactly, so.
I'm, I'm okay with paying the closing on his property up there.
I am too, but I think it's a little excessive.
I, I, I go ahead and accomplish a lot too much.
He is the attorney still, unless something, I'll do something about that, so.
But I think we need to find out about this other, now this, this, uh.
You'll put this on hold?
Michelle, Michelle calling him, I don't know why she called him about somebody wanting to run for office down here, I have no idea why she would've called the city attorney, but, you know, this, whoever.
It's a state statute.
Whoever's running for office, as you know.
I'm saying, that's a state statute.
That should be between that person and the election commission.
Right.
You know, it's got nothing to do with this town. Uh, that's, that's between, and I don't know why she called him, uh, you know, but I don't think we'll, I, I feel like we shouldn't pay that fee, because, you know, it just don't concern the town.
So, why don't we, um, if, well, you, you said you'll make money on that, nevermind.
How much is five point seven five hours?
Eleven, uh, one, one thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Fifty an hour.
Hundred fifty dollars an hour.
Seven hundred fifty dollars in the tax.
Apologize for my missed stuff.
Uh, we knew that he was working on the, uh, the property up here on the highway, I'm okay with going to pay him for that, but I think, I think the rest of it needs to be, uh.
Need to look at.
Needs to be looked at and, uh, discussed, but, you know, if somebody needs to explain to me why that, uh, a city would be involved with a person that's wanting to run for office, that's got an issue.
Yes, I agree.
You know, that's between, that's between them and the election commission and the state, it has nothing to do with us. We need to put it on hold, or are we gonna agree to pay the, the time spent on closing out the property?
Is that five back hours?
So, do we want to pay for the time that he's spending on the?
So I make a move that we pay him for what we owe him up on the highway, and then then we pay the other bills, but the rest of that other bill will be left to discuss.
Second.
Roll call.
I don't, we don't have that.
Ms. Brandon? Yes.
I don't have that.
Frankie?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, we'll hold up, we'll pay the fine. Okay, now.
That's, uh, I'm looking at that. They used to level. What was that day I asked you about?
I don't have my phone, I need to look at the calendar, I will be back to work on the two, the last Tuesday of the month, I think that's the day we were talking about.
That's the thirtieth.
I'll be gone from the twenty-fourth to the twenty-ninth.
Yeah, that's huge.
Yes.
I won't, I won't ask if we set up, go ahead and tentatively set up a call meeting for the thirtieth.
Well, we and Frankie.
The thirtieth.
July. June. Or July, it is, I'm sorry. I'm working on June here, so. At what time?
That's on Tuesday. Six.
Six o'clock, okay. I didn't hear that.
Okay, before we get into.
City Hall.
Before we get into the whole business.
What is this call meeting?
Just discuss the issue.
Just have, and, you know, I mean, you've got a little choice, but you're gonna have to have him come in to answer the question.
So he needs to be called.
I will make sure to call him.
I, I'm, I think he needs to be.
Well, he's out of the call, but he's alright, he's just, I think he's.
I think we need to suspend services temporarily till we can get this worked out on what, what we're doing. No more, no more work needs to be done from this whole court.
You making a motion?
Uh, we're gonna skip over the right hand little business, and we're gonna make.
No, I'm getting a motion.
We've got a motion on the phone.
Okay, okay, sorry.
I see.
What we gonna do here?
Suspend services.
Okay, yeah, okay, very good. Roll call.
Brandon. Present. Lucy.
Yes.
Okay, can we go, can we go forward now, okay? Alright, let's bring Nick Butler, Lake County Recreation Board, come on up here.
Oh, Nick.
Your business, you don't wanna let him get that?
Yeah, but we're gonna skip over that here, right now, Brenda, we're gonna, I'm gonna get approached.
Uh, well, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Nick Butler, I'm the Parks and Rec Director here, and I was just coming in to do a quarterly report about what we've been doing here with Parks and Recreation. So for one, we've currently, we've acquired three grants, one of those being through Blue Cross Blue Shield, um, uh, that will be a playground over in Tiptonville by the Armory. Um, we have the, the second grant that we have acquired is through ECD that will be an armory, uh, the Armory out by the lake, it will be converted into a fitness center and community center, and.
What does that mean, that's, that's good, excited about that?
Yes, I'm really excited about that, um, the third grant we have outstanding right now is for the ball fields over the Bill Lewis complex in Tiptonville. Um, but those will be for lights, getting the fields crowned, and just getting them basically back to where they're, it'll basically be a brand new complex with all that. Um, we have, we have a few events scheduled, one event being this weekend, we have the Quake Lake Classic, that will be a fundraiser that we're partnering with the Cal Ripken, Lake County Cal Ripken team. It's an adult softball tournament, uh, we currently have eighteen signed up, if anybody else is interested in joining or signing up, signups will go with, through Saturday, and, um, the tournament starts at eight AM Saturday morning, so if you wanna get a team together and sign up to play, uh, just get it in before then. Uh, the next thing is the Community Splash Day, uh, here in Ridgely, that would be July eighteenth, um, I will be there with, um, it'll be put on by the Ridgely Civic Center, and I'll be there. Um, I'll have some cornhole boards, canned jams, it's just gonna be a fun community day for everybody to come out, have a good time, um, and the last event that I got on schedule is, um.
What day was that?
Uh, July eighteenth, and that will be from, uh, five to seven P.M. Uh, yeah, it'll be at the Veterans Park. And then the last thing is the Tour of the Real Foot, um, this is, um, this will be the ninth annual one, this will be the first ever one that the Lake County Parks and Rec is doing. It used to be done by the Real Foot Ministries, but we have taken it over, and, um, it will be a, it's a bike tour, it's not a bike race, there will be three different routes that you can take, a sixteen mile, a thirty mile, and a sixty-two mile.
Long.
Yeah, I could say sixty-two miles.
I gotta go sixty-two dollars, we're giving a plate there.
All the proceeds will go to the Lake County Parks and Rec, and will help us get things going so we can start doing more programs and events, other things. The other big thing that I've been working on is finding a way to, um, kind of work with youth sports, um, since I've come, I've seen that youth sports have kind of been, it, it's, they, they've been just finding a way to create consistency and making sure that all the kids that participate, they're safe, and just making sure that they're getting the best experience possible, so currently figuring out ways that, um, the Parks and Rec can come in and help and make sure that the youth sports are, um, offered to the best of their abilities.
Uh, why are, we're fixing the, you're fixing the park in Tiptonville, are we not gonna get lighting out here at the park for the Golden Diamond out here in Ridgeley?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, eventually, eventually there will be, but this is, um.
Not right now?
Uh, well, it's just the grants that have come, uh, a lot of these grants have been brought to me, and that's, I've, I've been going in order of what I, and I can only have three grants outstanding at a time. So these were the first three grants that were brought to me, I've, I've, lights have been, um, a concern that have been brought up to me, and it's something that I'm working towards in the future.
Okay, good. Very good.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the Armory, has the city assigned responsibility?
Uh, the, um, Tiptonville, for the city, yes.
They've, they've already accepted responsibility?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so then you, you be using that as a headquarter, or?
Well, that will, well, um, I, I guess there, there has been talks that I could move my office into there, and, um, but it. But can you repeat the question again?
Question, the main question that I just want to know about is that that's got one heck of a nice firing range in it.
Yes, sir.
And we're doing things for kids, but I'd like to see that park utilized, I, I know we can't do it for kids out there, but that would be something to have opened up for the public for.
Guns, like.
Shooting safety problems, but, you know, for a firing range for individuals that won't go out there and shoot at, at night or whatever, I mean, to set up some, I, I'd like to see that utilized.
Well, and, well, that's what I know that currently with, from the walkthroughs that I've been through the Armory, it seems like a lot of that, it, it, it's basically kind of, it's just a, it's just a room now with cinder blocks, it's not, it's been completely taken out, um.
I didn't, I was unaware of that, 'cause I, I talked to them here about six, eight months ago, and all that's still intact.
Well, as far as the shooting range, at least, it, as far as I'm, with my walkthroughs, everything, it's, it's, the building's been completely empty, except for, it's, it's been gutted, and it, it's just kind of, there's no real furniture or anything.
I understand that, but the firing range, that, that room, the walls were built, the walls were built for the firing range.
Well, that's, uh, that would be the, when you're walking in from the front, that would be the far left room, and those, um, I'm, the walls may be, um, but I know that that was one of the rooms that we had looked at and talked about turning into the fitness floor of the, um, community center. The current, what we've looked at right now is having a gym in the middle, typical basketball gym, but it could serve, it could be used as to hold community events, whatever those may be, and, um, having a fitness center on that left side, um, having in the front, there would be a social conference area where people could come and socialize, have fellowship together, whatever, the room could be rented for birthday parties, family reunions, all those sorts of things, but there's also, there's still, um, in the back of the Armory, there is still, uh, I believe it's sixty-five thousand square feet of space open in the back, so, I mean, something like a shooting range or something, it's that far, that could be something that we look at in the future as we expand, and there's definitely room for additions in the back, so that could be an avenue that we look down.
Nick, is the kitchen still in it?
Uh, yes, well, uh.
Fairly intact?
Well, well, the kitchen is still back there, and we plan to keep that as a kitchen for possible, you know, community events, to be able to have hot food or whatever, but the kitchen has been gutted somewhat, but there's still enough in there that that will probably remain, that will remain a kitchen.
We can get more equipment.
Yes, yes, yes.
Next question to you real quick is, is there a community bulletin board or someplace online that we can go to see that list of activities that you just read off?
Uh, not currently, but a, a, as we work through, and that's what, there's still a lot of things, kind of moving pieces in the process and everything, but as I get more information, um, I can leave my phone number here or anything, and if you wanna contact me, I'll be more than happy to sit down, and I'll try to get as much information out as I can as, as I get it.
Thank you. Who, who decides, uh, who makes the decision where the grants are gonna be done?
Um, the, the grants.
In other words, we got, we got a lot going on up north, we don't have what's going on down there, we're gonna lift out, and I, you know, we're, I know we're smaller Tiptonville, but we need to get our heart.
Well, that's why, I understand that completely, and that's, I'm also, I'm, I'm one man that serving as an entire department, and, and that's what I, I.
Don't forget us.
I, 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 once, once this first wave comes through, I will shift, I will shift my focus over here, get y'all some lights, and anything else, any other suggestions, I'd love, I'm open to any suggestions, anybody.
Just one, as far as these grants, are you the one that applied for them or requested, or?
Well, um, as far as the Blue Cross Blue Shield grant, I applied for that one myself, and then we have had, um, T-Nec, so help from the state, they have brought some of the grants to us, and with their help, they have done some of the application process for us, and have kind of expedited the process, so, um, that, but, but yes, that's.
Okay, I'm, I'm, you know, how, how this process got started.
Yes, yes, the, of, the, the whole, the way the whole department got started is kind of the state had, well, it's, uh, the state has been helping, working alongside us through a lot of the ways, so, they've been a big help in getting this department up and running, and I think, did you have a question as well?
Uh, do you have a card?
Do I have a what?
A card.
A card?
Card.
I do not have a card right now, but I will, um, does somebody have a piece of paper or something?
The reason I'm saying that is, is we do have originally citizen stage, and if we can get the information, we can post it online for these events, because I know some, a lot of them are for the young, the young people, and, uh.
They don't know about it.
They don't know about it, so it'd be a lot easier if we could, uh, get ahold of you and then just put that, put that stuff on our page.
I'll, um, I'll write my name, phone number, kind of, um, email address, kind of.
Right here in the red hat.
Right here in the red hat.
Okay, I've got a question that don't, I mean, if I'm not mistaken, was that Armory not a deal, like, we had a catastrophe or something, that we moved the nursing home folks to that area? What's gonna happen, I mean, it, this really pertains, it does pertain both cities, but it pertains Danny Cook and the county. What, what's gonna happen now if we have a catastrophe and they take and change this thing to something else?
Well, they can still be, they can still be moved out there.
They can still convert it pretty quick.
I mean, they can still be moved out there, because it's not gonna be used every day, but it's.
The big thing, the big thing, airshaking, it was offered to the county, county turned it down.
Imagine that.
Well, and that's what, I, I, I don't have an exact answer to that, but as, as, as far as something like that, I'd be more than happy to help out in any way that I can. I want this community center to benefit the community in the best way possible.
No, I agree with you, but I'm just, I'm just looking out for the nursing homes as well.
I understand.
County had four shelters, and then you did more.
Well, and that's, that's all that I have, unless you have more questions.
Okay, alright, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, brother, appreciate it.
Stand up and help the fair. Alright, we're gonna move on, I think we've got, uh, water rates and ordinance review.
Motion's good, approve, second read.
Hold on, he's so much, can I borrow your beer?
Roll call.
She had, did that, this was the first, um.
Frank, congratulations.
Motion. Second.
Okay, Brandon?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, new business. We got, uh, Frankie Sharp, her and a new police officer, what's that, what's that on the?
I'll let, uh, here you go, first.
Alright. Hey, Terry. Stay in there.
Alright, I have turned in my paperwork, I'm getting ready to retire at the end of the month, I think it's time, my health is the reason I'm retiring. I think I put in a good call, it's, it's thirty-seven years altogether, and where do I begin? I start with a journey to about thirty-seven years ago, a police officer for the city of Ridgely, being a police officer takes a lot of resilience, and dedication, and love for your community, and I believe that I have demonstrated that through my years of service through our small town. I've seen and done a lot over the years, and as an officer, that always stayed in my mind forever. And as an officer, that always stayed in my mind forever, edged in my mind forever, that some of the things that I've seen, some thing I participated in. And it was a blessing to be a part of other things, such as the most difficult things I've ever had to do. I've had the privilege of working under and beside among many greats, as the sheriff, the chief of police, as the city officer deputies, uh, others, first responders along the way. I'm honored to have worked with such a great group of men and women, with the same enthusiasm and gratitude. It has been an honor to serve the people of Ridgefield as an officer, as assistant chief, as also as the chief of police for three decades. I thank your trust in me and your support along the way. Y'all have supported me in many things. With all that being said, I feel it's time to let the job go that I've helped so dearly with my heart. Excuse me. For younger junior ages for responsibility. It has come to time that I retire and have a new adventures. And rela- relaxation sounds great. I have more than time to spend doing the things I enjoy. I have to not worry about answering the radio or being on call. So at July thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, I officially retire as the chief of police of the city of Ridgefield.
Hey, I appreciate it. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion to accept your resignation.
Roll call.
Yeah.
Second part of that was that with him resigning, that's leading us now, we'll avoid before we're down, back down to two officers. An individual that's interested in the job and at one time we had him hired, but, uh, I'd like to make a motion to hire Jason Dubbs as a city police officer. And opened up the candidacy for chief of police. And that was the primary reason for having the call meeting the thirtieth is that, that they have put on the, uh, we'll page starting mall, advertising for a chief's job. And give us two weeks of advertisement.
Alright.
Set up the thirtieth, we'll have the, uh, we'll have the meeting to do, uh, discuss the, uh, what, uh, the, the bill. But then we'll have to go into a session as far as interviewing and interview any candidates. We've got, uh, we got two applications right now.
Also, um, but as, as, he is still the chief until the thirtieth, the month, right, the thirty-first of this month, so.
But he's on, he's on sick leave, he can't, with him being on sick leave, your acting chief is gonna be right there.
So, as, even as far as just hiring another person, wouldn't he just hire another person?
Well, we don't have, we don't have a full-time chief and that's his responsibility and this is the rehire date. That's why I'm, I'm placing a motion that we hire Jason Dubbs. I'll second the motion.
As an officer.
As an officer. And then we'll, we'll collect applications, which he has turned an application in for chief, Joel has turned an application in for chief.
But he won't be actually hired until we go over the applications and go through the interview.
He won't start till, till August morning.
Brenda, yes.
Renee, yes.
Thank you.
Now, since, yeah, we got one thing we don't wanna ask on this question. When we gonna get him in the category, that he's gotta go back to the category?
He's got one, well.
He's gotta do three weeks, one of.
We're not, we're not gonna break that, right?
Okay.
We're, we're working on that, we're working on that.
You just hired a guy that hasn't been to the academy?
No, he's been served by, he's gotta do a one week refresher and then two weeks baseline that he can do while he's working. That's what, uh, he's been through, the vice commander told us.
I don't know him.
He just had. He's chief, then chief deputy, he's worked for the city of Tiptonville, we hired him as chief here. And overnight, Newcor called him and he called the next morning, we hired him as chief. And they had offered him a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. And I told him, I said, hey, Jason, I understand that, hundred and twenty-five versus what we just paid you, I don't blame you a bit for taking the job. So he stepped back and, uh, but now he wants to, to come back to Ridgefield.
He wants to leave a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Seven days a week, twelve hours a day, he, he, he left that job over there a half a month ago.
Can I ask just one question?
Yes, go ahead.
You got a man on staff that's been here for eight or nine months, ten, I don't know how long Joel's been here, but why would you skip over him?
That's why we're saying.
Point him chief and let Jason be a officer? I mean, you got a man that's been committed here instead of walking away.
We're hoping of.
I know what you're doing, but it's not right. My opinion, but everybody's got opinions.
Could I say something more? Joel has been beside me the whole time, cause y'all know when I took chief of police, I took it the worst time you could've took it. Didn't have nobody, I mean, I was down, y'all were gonna close this police department, if I hadn't stepped in. I mean, the whole board, I think, I'm not, I'm just looking for you. He's so pretty in there.
Hey Terry, are you talking about me?
No, I'm just saying, this man has stood beside me, he's a chance and I'm sure he's gonna get his chance. And I have nothing against Jason, he's a good officer. But y'all gonna need another officer, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna last to the last part of the month, month, and I'm done, I'm outta here. But y'all, this man's gonna need another officer and he could be hard as a rock, and they too.
So Terry, are you still on sick leave?
I am. And I know my time's gonna run out, but you know, I'm still on sick leave because of stress. Of course, anybody could get stressed out on this job. It's not just y'all, it's the whole job in general. It's a big responsibility being a chief of police. And you know that, you were the man that hired me. Out of all the deals, you hired me first, so anyway, it all goes around them, but anyway. I'm proud of this police department, but I just want to be done right now, so everybody has equal opportunity and I think that's what Frankie wants. Uh, this man's gonna have his chance at it, but he's a good guy and I'm standing up for him, I made him assistant chief before I left. I did that for a purpose where I have a little more money, cause it just don't get paid, and I know y'all don't have the money. I'm not arguing that for one, I'm not arguing that. I knew what it paid when I come down here. But I think we just need to let everybody have a chance at it and y'all make the decisions, that's what y'all are supposed to do, y'all in that seat, not me. But I think he needs to have a chance too, and that's all I'm gonna say.
It didn't pay very much when you come down here, did it?
No.
It didn't pay very much there.
But, I mean, you know, I had other things, I, I went to teach for twenty-five years, I made up my paper to good, but I worked hard at it, I did. But y'all got the good people, maybe y'all could turn it around, but I just wish that y'all would really, well, let him run it for a while. So while I'm gone, y'all go and tell y'all make the decisions, make me chief of.
I'd like to ask you a question. Isn't the chief of police the head of his department?
That's right.
Shouldn't he do his own hiring?
That's what I was just saying.
So I thought.
That's what I just said.
Yes.
Yes. So he should do his own interview and his own hiring, okay.
See, I have one now, that's why.
Thank you.
They're doing what they're doing. I think the chief should hire the chief of police, cause he's working under him. But you don't have one right now, you will have, then he can hire who he wants.
Well, he's the acting chief.
I got one to the thirty-first and that's me, I'm still acting chief to the thirty-first.
Well, this is doing a make leave.
Here's what.
I thought you promised it to me.
He's the chief regardless, you know that.
So I guess what I'm saying, so why couldn't Joel as acting just hire the, the man, why do we even have?
That's his decision, he's my assistant chief right now, I'm gonna let him make that decision. Now me, cause I'm, I'm gonna have. That's what I think.
He's already been hired, sounds like it.
Me too.
Sounds, sounds like it.
No, we, we just now did it.
What's in this guy working with this man right here, cause he's assistant chief. And I am the chief, he's working underneath at the thirty-first and that's how I'm gonna leave it, I'm gonna.
We got Renee West over the cemetery.
Um, I'm addressing this on behalf of a, and I don't even get on Facebook that much, but I'm addressing this over, um, a situation that come across Facebook concerning the cemetery. There is a spot out at the cemetery where they put the trash, like when they get the clean off the garb, uh, the graves, the leftover flowers and those iron things, all that, and they put it over there to be taken off. Well, there's not, it looks horrible over there and it's not closed off where, so anybody can see it, it's just a mess. And so, I don't.
We need to put the fence back up.
We need to put the fence back up, repair it. We need two, or I don't know really how much rooms out there, but we need enough, we need two big garbage cans or something to put stuff in there and then we need the city to go out there once a week to empty those trash cans or something, just to get all that cleaned up, if that's feasible.
Can we, is that something we can clean up, the stuff they're talking about?
Yeah, it's.
Go get it.
We, we've got garbage cans at the, at that one. Yeah, we cleaned up before.
When they, when they mow.
But we need that fence fixed. We need the fence fixed and maybe attach the garbage cans to the fence so somebody won't steal them.
Okay.
You know, whatever you have to do, cause I realize all that's a problem out there. But, um, it just, it just needs to look a little neater, you got people coming in looking at the land, looking at the graves and it's just a.
Okay, we'll take care of.
About a year ago, we had it made up about a year ago, but it still hadn't looked particularly nice.
So if I could just cover your schedule about once a week or every other week, you go out there and tidy.
When they pick up limbs, they, they can pick it up too.
What about the garage door, that door's.
The length should be a little bit bigger than.
Think the frame's going on it.
You think that just makes it prepared?
I think the frame might be broken, the garage door.
Well, I make, I make a motion that, um, the, um, the fence, the fence be fixed and that door be fixed.
On the building.
On the building.
Right.
And that, uh, the can, garbage cans be placed out there, attached to the fence and that the city clean it up on a regular basis.
That's the way it is, uh, not on your. It should just be done.
Oh. Well, she, he's got them under, he said.
I told you, they, they shouldn't, they shouldn't be, only garbage I've ever seen out there.
He said, uh, Frankie said to the man that picks up the trash on the road, they would come by there and pick up this stuff.
I think they would.
Okay.
I talked to him last week, he said they are coming in there once a week. Well, you know, it's.
But do that fine, you trick on your house.
You can't even pick it up at your house, and then you pick it up out there.
That old bush needs to be cut down. That old bush needs to be cut down or pulled up out there, one.
Okay, that won't be no problem here.
Alright, we got, we, we got that worked out. Okay, Frankie Sharp rehired the property.
City recorder on bed, make motion to retain her employment for another year.
Well, wait a minute. Cause we discussed for two months.
Charter says, this is the meeting today. The charter approved.
That's what.
Not what the charter says.
That's not what the charter says.
Charter says this.
We haven't been going with the charter.
Wanna see section eight of the charter, it does not say that, says after the.
Okay, go ahead.
May I, may, may I read section eight of the charter?
Please.
So we get it, hold on one second.
I took it out.
Alright, I'll take it out. The section eight of the charter reads, and the only thing that got changed in it was the amount of time, but it says, "All officers of the town shall be elected by the board of mayor and alderman at the first regular meeting after the annual election. And among the officers to be elected shall be the chief of police, which we have to replace cause one resigned, the recorder, treasurer, tax collector, and water and waste superintendent. Uh, but all other employees may be chosen and their duties prescribed whenever the board shall deem for good of the town. The officers above mentioned shall hold office for four years and until their successors are elected and qualified, the board combined any two or more of such officers to be by ordinance, if deemed proper and good for the town except for the chief of police." Now that says right there that it comes, the first regular meeting after the general election, which was almost two years ago. No, we'd have them every two years, don't we? Oh, every four years.
Well, the only thing we wanted to change on that was, instead of having it in January, that we do six months after these people get put in, in January, so that, because there are people that are coming new into the.
I understand that, what I'm saying, that's not what the charter says.
Right, I know, it does say right after that, but it's not in July, I mean.
It comes as after the first bill, meeting after the election, which is coming up in November. So it would be six months after you made up that and put it in here, which you didn't, but if that was the case, it would be next June. Not, not now.
Not June, what is it, what am I, June or?
Well, it would be May or June, six months after is what, it doesn't say that in here, cause you haven't changed it yet. You haven't made that change in the charter. But it states the first election after, I mean, the first regular meeting after the general election. And you all said that was too quick for a new board, let's move it for six months ahead of that, but that would make it next May or June, before you hire anybody, or re-up them. Until then, they all got their jobs, you don't have to rehire. They're already in place, you don't have to rehire.
It's gonna be done next year or next year, it don't matter.
Well, of course.
You don't do it till next.
But that's not what the charter, and this is actually the, the abbreviated, the, the new one that y'all wrote up, the amended one. But you didn't change the wording in it.
Or, yeah, but we go back.
It reads the exact same thing as the charter said before you had your meetings over here and abbreviated everything. The only thing you changed in section eight about this was going from two to four years. It said two years, you changed it to four. Other than that, the rest of the wording never changed from this new part, this new section to what was in there. So everything still should read, these people all have their jobs, you don't hire them until next May or June when you rehire them. And you haven't actually put that in here yet.
You, you said that at last month's meeting, you said next year in July, you basically said that just the new people coming in from January, gives them six months to get to know the people over there.
So they're all got their jobs, you don't need to hire them.
Exactly.
Cause that was a senior moment.
I'm just saying, that's what the charter reads.
Leave your leg it is, there you go.
Thank you.
Well, I, what I'm talking about is giving, giving the people time that, uh, you, board members come on.
Right.
Give them time to.
Right, exactly.
Whether the department heads, the employees.
And I totally agree with that, but what I'm saying is, is you're got, you're about a year ahead of time. The new board's coming in, this.
It doesn't matter if they hired, they either hired it now or next year, it doesn't matter, you hire it this year, you hire it again next year.
Yeah, exactly, by rights, it's a right to hire fire state anyways, see you whatever you want, but I don't know why that's in the charter.
Well, then they should, they should have a job six months prior, after an election, so people can.
And I concur with that.
Okay, let's, let's, we're gonna move on, I got good C. Robinson, stay on the city property.
Uh, the other property I'm talking about. Uh, the other property I'm talking about, my ear is, uh, this old patrol car sitting out here, you know, it's not used, they don't have a. An hill, Sherlake, or GMC pickup, been sitting at the water plant now for, I don't know, for two, three, four years. Uh, and two old lawn mowers that's out there, I've seen things sit out there in the past, and things come up missing off of them, and they land in junk, you never know yet.
Donny, you wanna speak?
Yes, sir, I'd, I'd like to, the green truck, we got it running, we got, we fixed the flats on it and got it running. The only thing really wrong with that truck is the rear main seal is leaking in it a little bit, and it's got a bunch of little stuff wrong with it, but I mean.
You don't, you don't ever use.
But we don't use it, yeah, you're right, and we got a golf cart out there we don't use, it's old.
Is it running?
It used to run, it's got some little something wrong with the, the way it starts or something, somebody changed.
Looked at it one time, it's done had the battery taken off of it.
Yeah, it don't have no battery in it, no.
Looked like it was, looked like it was been jumped out.
It's just sitting there, been sitting there for years, right, oh, but the mowers, we've been using the mowers to mow the stuff, that's hard on mowers, like out towards your house and stuff, we're trying to fix some of the, the old ones up to use for stuff like that. So I'd really like to hang on to them for a little while, but, I mean, they'll be, they'll, they'll keep our new ones and shit, you know, from getting tore up. But, other than that, that's, that's about the only things I know out there that we could really get rid of. That old garbage truck we was talking about, instead of getting a truck and a dump trailer and trying to get a bed put on that garbage truck, because that's a really good truck.
It's a, it's a good truck, it's a nice truck, and, and really, I, I would like to see the truck fixed, you know, either for backup garbage. Cause right now, we don't have any backup at all on the.
It could be fixed, that, what's wrong with it, could be fixed pretty easy.
Well, it definitely was fixed before, because it, it didn't have sound effects, cause it's been used.
Yeah, yeah.
It wasn't, uh.
We could take it somewhere now and.
It wasn't taken care of, and it wasn't maintained or anything else. But it, I don't think it takes a, a lot of money to repair it, and it, it can serve, it can serve as a garbage truck.
I saw, didn't I saw you what was wrong with it, quicker?
Scott Bass said you gotta buy that back, back, you know, where it pushes up, but, but you can go down there in baskets, maybe, and they might have one that burned, and that might be good, and get that, get somebody to put it over there.
That guy that, uh, well, Danny, the welding shop right there, he probably just cut out a big brick and left that unwelded back right.
Put it back.
I think he could, you know, and I don't know why, uh, that's, I don't know if it's, uh, the cylinder's bad or leaking or what, but.
No, it don't leak or nothing, and, and it works, everything works, it just won't, it won't pack as much stress as it's supposed to. It won't pack as good as it is.
Now. But if you fix it though, we should do the job.
Yeah, it'll do everything, yeah, that's a nice truck.
But the thing of it is, you know, we, and I wrote it up before, wrote it up, about this big old garbage truck that's running our streets, you're gonna tear it all pieces.
It already is turning.
It already is tearing up.
You ready to get back to garbage business?
I don't, you know, I, I think you need to check with us, see if we've got a smaller truck that can use this now. But, you know, and in fact, that, and then in fact, that, I don't know, we're paying them this year, we're gonna pay them about two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to pick up our garbage. Well, I'd like to see this one fixed. Well, we got the, uh, right now, we've got, including Donny, of course, with Donny, there's about five people working out there with him right now. But, uh, yeah, it needs to be one or two more people out there.
Donny's bred for debate right now.
Yeah, he's, uh, he's got a lot of.
They put average O in that truck, regular license, you're gonna tell the city, oh, God.
Now, you're not gonna, we're not gonna get no appraisal Friday truck.
Well, I want, we need to take a look at having backup plan on this yard.
Yeah, okay.
Last week, everybody's garbage didn't get picked up.
I'm all, I'm all for that, but I've got one question to throw out to y'all, uh, the landfill up on the hills closed. So where's the next nearest landfill if we would have to drive the truck to?
Dyersburg.
Okay, so it's not that far?
It's Dyersburg.
So it's not much, well, I'm getting at though, W C, it's not much farther than taking it up in the hills to go to.
Well, I know, let, let Roe sit out there, and they were saying, they had a garbage bin, sit out there with a garbage on it. And he carries it over to Dyersburg, Dyersburg, and he was dumping that garbage.
Yeah, this, I got a question, this company that's doing our garbage now, are they, they taking it to their landfill? So we don't have to pay no landfill, it's figured into our garbage right? But if you change and start running your own truck, you don't have to pay your own garbage.
That's what I'm saying, they, they charge, they charge fifty-seven dollars to dump a load that we carried over there.
Charge about a ton or a pound or whatever.
You figure that up, uh, over twelve months' time, and if you carried, uh, say, eight loads, uh, a month over there.
Fifty-seven dollars. They charged me seven hundred dollars for thirty, thirty yard dumpsters.
I don't care, I don't know what to charge you, I know what they charge us to bring our truck over, our dump it.
There's what? There's gonna be more.
The court know how much weight it's on.
Yeah, it's weight.
They do about a ton, I'm gonna tell you.
It just takes a little bit of research and then talk about.
Donny, don't ask us, we're not much worse than we are.
Now, we're gonna have comments first, okay, let's crowd, okay, who wants to comment on this? We're gonna have comments like they do.
We gonna sell vehicles, we gonna put vehicles up for sale.
Yeah, 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 get, get real estate.
Is that the truck car and the truck, or you gonna let, keep the truck?
Nah, we don't leave the truck.
The green truck, come up the green truck, yeah, we, we, nobody's gonna use it, we don't use it.
And the golf cart?
The golf cart.
The old golf cart.
But you wanna keep the mowers, right?
That's two vehicles that's bound to come out of insurance.
Well, yeah, right, yeah, we don't pay that.
What about the police car here?
What about the police car, is it run?
Yeah, probably will if it's been, it hadn't been run, but just, just throw this out. These used police cars, Tiptonville is junking every one of theirs, they're not even, they can't even get beds on trying to sell ten of them at a time. They're, they're stripping everything out of them, what I was told by some of the department that, that they're stripping everything out of them, and carrying them across the scale and selling them to the scrap. Now, I don't know, what can, I mean.
We gonna advertise the paper, or we gonna?
I will get the key, I will find the police car and see if I can get it running and make sure there's nothing to, without being, I'll be, any, any of the radios or so much, and. If it'll boot, I mean, I just, those batteries on those cars are off, and they're, they look like something ought to be on a tank.
Well, some, somebody was called and told that I was on the city backhoe, and I don't know who done this or whatever, it went around the town, and I wanna tell you that I was not on the city backhoe, and Donny and them will tell you that I had somebody else to backhoe. I got farmers out in random prime, I do not use any of the city equipment, so whoever called and said that, they should not be doing it.
That's the first I heard, but, uh, I don't know.
And I just wanted to ask, has anybody gotten on the, uh, we were gonna do the, uh, Bennett's, uh, sewage, run the lines out there, is it, is that, have been any progress made over that?
I have talked, I have talked to some people about it, but, I mean, Mr. W C, don't seem to think we got the money to do it, to do that.
You got, you got any figures on that, Donny?
Uh, if we put, if, it's depending on, just, it's depending on if we put a pump at each house, which that's what they told me would be best. And if we put the power pole, or they put the power pole, and it, it could go either way. Tiptonville put their own power poles, and from what I heard, it was about ten thousand dollars for a power pole and all that. And then the pumps are about five thousand dollars a piece, I think, so you're looking at probably twenty thousand dollars to do it, yeah. Yeah, y'all did both to do it, yeah.
Donny, is it gonna, you gonna try to pump it down to this next house, sewer down?
Yeah, right there where that house burnt, it's from their house over to there.
And that's gonna take two pumps?
That's what I was told that, that would be better, but that way, that way each house had its own pump.
Yeah.
And they making a smaller pump now, I'll get some prices on, if, if we're gonna do it, I mean, I'll start working on it if we're gonna do it.
You gotta run one line or two.
One line, run one line, but, but we need, I, I just need to know if we're gonna, if, are we gonna supply the power pole, and that's what.
That, that I don't know, do we supply the power pole, or do they supply the power pole? Well, what does everybody else in town do?
Tiptonville supplies their own power pole, I mean, I was told it'd be better if we supplied the pole.
I, I made a motion that they would.
We already made a motion to do it.
Okay, okay.
Y'all put that new line, you're gonna catch all the house, the, all the houses on that, like where my Susan Dolster and Chris Roney them live, as well. I didn't realize they're on safety tanks.
Yeah, they, they don't, they don't outsew down there till they have.
Right, I didn't realize that, but, uh, and all the rest of the sewer up through there is running, you know, it's, that's running almost level.
Yeah. That's why I'm.
Mr. W C, are the houses on that side of the road, or the houses on that side of the road, they're not on safety tanks?
It backed up, my sister, we spent twenty-two thousand, we had.
I think those houses can be run to the gulf. Gravity.
But that was the second part.
The houses on that, great town, yeah, I think it, it gravity feed to the other side of the plumbing hole, so that's a lot closer.
Do we have a, a water problem today in the county?
Uh, we had three leaks this morning, we picked.
Water purchase seems like it's all down off of that, uh, you know, no bush.
Oh, really? Hmm, I, I, I didn't notice them getting no water in that today, out of the fire hydrant, so I don't, I don't know when that could be, unless we got a leak somewhere.
All day, W C, or just periodically?
This afternoon, a new bit of noise.
Well, since you, Don, you gotta even come up there and fix that one in the alley, it goes can't, Patterson.
Yeah.
He's had it, he had to come back in, they fixed it.
Another.
Six feet in front of it, it popped another leak.
Well, it'd be like when you put.
Whole line.
It used, it used to be a two inch main that run down that road, and they went back and run a three quarter, one three quarter line, down that road that feeds everything, so really, we need to go back and put a two inch all the way back down through it, and fix it right, I mean, it's just, it's rigged up right now.
And who, who, who they supply, what lines it supplies?
I know it's.
Probably they can't, but then, I'm, uh, Stacey's got a line on it that, just, uh, for her swimming pool. So there's two beavers on it, but it, main thing is getting Patterson's old, there at his house shop, there's lines on that.
Okay.
Another thing we got here, we got this reappraisal cost, we seen that today. The appraisal out of the county says, uh, Danny Cook said this letter's before your appraisal, appraisal cost per share requested originally, will be fifty-eight hundred fifty-three dollars ninety-seven cents, I said, but it was sixty-seven, sixty-one, so we, we saving a hundred nine hundred seven dollars. You know, we have to pay that each year on the appraisal.
Each appraisal year, we have to split it.
Right, that's what I'm saying, and then we also got the, uh, I can't see that, y'all got the seat on the, we have to pay the dispatcher.
Dispatcher sheet went up just a little over twenty-nine hundred.
What, what?
Is that one?
Um, it was twenty-five hundred.
Is it still twenty-five or is it twenty-nine?
No, it's twenty-nine, the paper's in y'all.
I figured, that's figuring their paper.
Did you tell them our budget's already approved, eyes?
I should've got that before we did our budget.
Yeah, we didn't, this was dated July the second, so we did not get it before the, I just got it, um, twenty-nine oh eight thirty-two, is what it went up, so, and it's gonna be another, uh, all, right at five thousand dollars a year more.
I think we run into that one time before, or when Danny was up there, and we just paid what we had to reach the budget, uh, did we not?
Well, they said the appraisal was lowered down a hundred something dollars.
Right on the dispatcher.
Dispatch.
We paid, they, they got it figured, where there's a, we paid one and a third, don't we, brother? Tiptonville pays one and, one and a third dispatcher?
Right.
We paid one and a third, and the county pays one and a third. What I still don't, and my argument has been for years, each individual out here that pays property tax, pays it on their city, and they also pay county tax. What's your county tax for? That's double dipping, I mean, they're hitting you twice, you have to pay it through your county tax, and then you have to turn around and pay it again through the city tax.
I just, I don't, I don't think you're right.
Well, we'll do it, I think.
Every time it's been voted on, and I've talked about every time, never hear the other end is bold, I've voted no vote, but I didn't think you're right.
I, I, do we not have a, a contract, and if the government contracts?
I think so, we've had, yeah.
That where we agreed to pay it?
Oh, we have to.
I did talk to him, cause I had already mailed the payment, cause the payment is due on the first of the month.
Okay.
So I had already mailed the payment when this came in.
So we're, we're paying it anyway.
I paid the twenty, no, I paid the twenty-five hundred.
Okay.
And then the next, after, the day after I mailed the letter, they sent this out.
Okay.
So I talked to him today and told him, I said, I've already sent our payment for this month, and she said, well, you can just take it on the next month, so, she didn't give me any other options, I said, I didn't have to pay it.
I think they had to give it to before we did work, I'm like, they come to dig.
The lady that answered the call, we had a mayor's office.
I'm not voting this, John. John?
Oh, wait, 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 gee, you wanted to say?
Yeah, can I just say something?
Uh, no, uh, go ahead.
Go ahead. I, I, I wanted to take, thank the mayor today for, um, the situation, um, our senior center, of course, is right next door, and we were just so thrilled when all the paving got put in, I think everybody is, so we're not, you know. And, uh, having to fill tire up, cause I got a piece of something in there, but, uh, and we were thrilled, we were just absolutely tickled when that was all done, and then that water main broke.
Right, that problem.
And all those stones and rocks were all over, and we have had a awful time with our seniors, cause some of them come in, you know, with their canes and that, and some we have that are on walkers, and, uh, my husband's got dementia, and he has a hard time with balance, he tripped this morning, almost fell down, we had to grab him, I have, uh, Pat Hodo with me, and she almost fell, so she was on one arm and Dave was on the other arm, and I'm trying to keep my own balance, and it has been really rugged, and so I told Connie Hopper this morning, and, and she called the mayor, and the guys were out in less than an hour, and swept all that stone out in front of the senior center, which is fine, but the stone's back on the pile where the water main broke, and every time cars go over, the stones are, the rocks are scattered in there.
I was going to get.
We need you, or maybe somebody call, call that, uh, the guy, have come back yet?
You know, we're gonna, you don't have to worry with the water, man, it came down here, I turned pictures, it's hard to tell. There's stuff coming to fix this, I'm over, we'll, I'll let you know, we'll get, we'll fix this here.
Well, I, I talked to him, you know, the day he was out here, one of our, they come out here with me, and they're, they're not time, and nobody showed up, and I said, no.
So you don't have to actually mix it.
I, I. I'm worried about our seniors and other people that walk around, Dave, but I see young people leaving and older people riding bicycles, and they're hitting those stones, so, uh, my question is, is that going to be repaired?
And also, you thank Donny Simmons and the crew for coming.
We'll try to keep, we'll try to keep it swept up until we get it fixed.
But I noticed across the street at the nursing home, where they park right over here, there's a lot. But I noticed across the street at the nursing home where they park right over here, there's a lot of stones there. Of course, we didn't get to talk to them, so they could move cars, but maybe somebody could take care of that.
Okay, we'll get, we'll, we'll, we'll-
Thank you for doing that, it would've been so much easier getting back in our cars.
Yeah, we don't want y'all fouling for sure.
No, oh, no.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We gonna, we won't go over to fix that back.
Right, yeah.
Better use that.
And we did. Donny needs to do it, cut it out with the saw, and then, right, Tiptonville let us have that, uh, hot mix machine, didn't he?
Yeah, I just, Mr. Don gave me a valve, we got a hundred gallon, uh, propane tank we're gonna, we gotta put on it, and the valve was bad. And Mr. John, Mr. Don just gave me a valve, and we just got it put in yesterday. Now we gotta take it and get it filled up and go get some cold fats, and we'll be ready to start doing it. But we'll, we'll have to clean the holes out and square them up, and-
Yeah.
I'm the one that put the cones on Lake Street.
I was wondering about that.
The cones have been sitting at my beauty shop for three years piled up. And I had two complaints, was somebody almost knocked the front end out hitting that thing, so I just went and piled the cones up there so somebody could at least see.
We've been trying to go around every couple days and put gravel in them and stuff, but we need to get them back.
I, I realize, if you're around it, you can't say that, I'm just saying, I'm-
Anybody else got any comments or anything, okay. Got the air conditioner?
Yeah, the air conditioner at the shelter went out.
We gonna buy an air conditioner?
Um, it was the air conditioner that y'all had in the building.
That's why I told her to come to the-
We gonna buy an air conditioner one-ten for the-
It was, it's the air conditioner that y'all already had in the building. Um, Donny took it, we tried to fix it, it's not working. I did secure a temporary, uh, replacement for right now, but it's not big enough to fit in it, so we had to take blankets and stick in there. And I've got some fans in there to help keep it cool, but I didn't know if y'all would be willing to replace the air conditioner.
I heard that Lowe's will donate air conditioners for working places, that's seriously, I see that on the welcome.
I was told there is some at Ollie's, I was south forty-five, I haven't checked, they're about a hundred and thirty, but I'm not a major, I can never fit in the hole. To make sure it fits in that hole, and all, all these is that big. I just brought it to y'all because their, that, their budget, we did increase their budget for the euthanization needs if the emergency arose, that they, she needed to euthanize one. But we would have to do it some other way because there's some money in the dog pound, the dog pound would have to cover that.
Is it required by the humane society for being an air conditioner there?
It is, the red building is so hot, like, eh-
Gotta be conditioned.
I don't have windows in there or anything, so I have to have them.
Yeah, try to find out what an air conditioner's called, and get you an air conditioner.
Go on Marketplace.
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
When we moved in our house, I had a good sized one in, uh, our bedroom window that I took out, but it's sitting on a shelf in my garage.
Yeah.
Uh, Donny, Donny and I, Donny and I will go down and measure tomorrow and see if it'll fit, and, uh, I'll swap you it for the police car. No, but we, we can look at it and see if it'll work. Now, it does not have heat in it, but it's a pretty good sized air conditioner. Yeah, she did.
What'd you say, Mr. Bill, what'd you say you were for it?
I didn't say I wanted anything for it. Yeah, we gotta find out if it works. And then I'll give you, and then I'll give you a deal.
Let me know, I'll get you a ticket.
I'll give you a, I'll give you a heck of a deal.